It's 5:30, so we'll call the meeting to order. If you would stand please and join me in a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. We don't have the minutes of the last meeting here, so we will carry those forward until the next meeting. At the beginning of each meeting, we have a public comment period. There will be a public hearing for every item on the agenda, but if anyone has any general comments they wish to make, now's the time to do it.
Name an address for the record.
Well, as we all know, this is Jim Green's last meeting, and so we are, you know, it's going, I can't, don't know that I'd blame him, the beach sounds pretty, pretty nice right about now, but he will definitely be missed here in Apopka. So I got a proclamation, which I think well deserved. I'm not going to give it to you tonight because I've got to give it to you tomorrow after the pension meeting, which you also serve on. But I do want to read it just for the people here in the room that you serve with. And, you know, we, we definitely will miss your leadership in a lot of different areas of this proclamation, and I'm sure I've left out a few things, but I do want to read this one. And what it says is, whereas Jim Green and his wife Nancy have lived in Rock Springs Ridge since 2003, and whereas Jim has been on the Planning Commission for over 12 years, he joined the commission in 2010. Jim has attended over 140 meetings and has been the chairman for the last seven years, which means he's chaired over 80 meetings. And whereas, under Jim's leadership, the Planning Commission is run smoothly and efficiently, which is a blessing to both staff and applicants. Jim has rarely missed a meeting during his 12 years on the council. And whereas Jim is a graduate of the Apopka Police Department's Citizens Police Academy, the CPA, he has been a member of the CPA since 2006. He served as president from 2011 to 2014, and as a treasurer from 2010 to 2011, and then again from 2019 to 2021. And whereas Jim has been a tremendous asset to the police volunteer organization, Jim was always a steadfast volunteer for CPA events, including Shop With A Cop, Cops and Bobbers, National Night Out, and Apopka High School football games. He worked countless hours and always with a smile. Whereas Jim has also served on the city police pension board. He was first appointed on April 2nd, 2014, and serves as the fifth treasurer, fifth trustee. And whereas Jim and his wife are retiring again to New Smyrna Beach, where they look forward to long walks on the beach. And whereas Jim's last official meeting is tonight, Tuesday, May 10th, at 5:30 PM. Now therefore, I, Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, Florida, do hereby recognize and commend Jim Green for the years of service on the planning council and all the other activities here in the City of Apopka. Thank you.
Well, I can say at my last meeting, I had some unexpected things, so thank you very much. I don't even want to ask if there are any other public comments, but I will. And seeing none, I will bring it back to the commission. Our first item is a comprehensive plan, small-scale future land use amendment, Plymouth-Sorrento-North, from city future land use in progress, FLU-I-P, county rural, to mixed use. Owner is David L. Vakel, Wanda S. McLardy, Larry M. Everly Senior Family Trust, and Connie F. Everly Family Trust. The applicant is Appian Engineering LLC, care of Luke Klassen PE. Location is 5704, 5706, and 5708 Plymouth-Sorrento Road, and 3100 Unditch Road. And we have a staff presentation.
It's hard to follow that. Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the small-scale future land use amendment for Plymouth-Sorrento North from city future land use in progress and county rural to mixed use. The property is located within the one-mile radius of State Road 429 and Kelly Park Road. Also sits on the southwest corner of Unditch Road and Plymouth-Sorrento Road, north adjacent of the Bridle Path subdivision, and is approximately 39 acres in size. The KPI Form-Based Code requires that this property is assigned a mixed-use future land use designation before developed. Subject parcels will be allowed a maximum density of between one dwelling unit per acre and a minimum density of one dwelling unit per acre, and maximum density of five dwelling units per acre, as well as a minimum .5 floor area ratio and a maximum .75 FAR. Applicant has also submitted a rezoning application, which is the next item on the agenda. The DRC recommends approval, and the recommended motion is to recommend approval to amend the future land use map from city FLU-I-P and county rural to mixed use. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff or the applicant? Okay, we'll close the presentation and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to find the proposed change in future land use from city FLU-I-P and county rural to mixed use, consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code, and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the future land use amendment based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Stanley. Is there a second?
No, second.
Second by Commissioner Gussler. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. Our next item for this property is a change of zoning, Plymouth-Sorrento North and the master plan, from T Transitional in County A1 Citrus Rural to KPI-MU Kelly Park Interchange to Mixed Use. The owner, David L. Vakel, Wanda S. McLardy, Larry M. Everly Senior Family Trust, and Corinne F. Everly Family Trust. Again, the applicant is Appian Engineering LLC, in care of Luke Klassen PE. Location 5704, 5706, and 5708 Plymouth-Sorrento Road, and 31 Unditch Road. We have a staff presentation.
Again, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from transition to KPI-MU Kelly Park Interchange to Mixed Use, and an assignment of neighborhood overlay. The accompanying master plan proposes a development of 140 lot subdivision consisting of single-family detached residences. The residential units will have a minimum lot width of 34 feet for rear-loaded units and a minimum living area of 1,300 square feet, as well as 55 feet of front-loaded units with a minimum living area of 1,500 square feet. There are no minimum and maximum standards and lot size requirements in the KPI Form-Based Code area. The proposed access points consist of access along Plymouth-Sorrento Road and additional access points from the south-adjacent residential development, Bridle Path subdivision, connecting to the northern project limits to Unditch Road. The applicant also proposes a 12-foot-wide recreational trail along Plymouth-Sorrento Road frontage, creating connectivity between developments. A recreational trail is also proposed along the perimeter of the Stormwater Pond located on the southwestern area of the development, and connects with the trail in the Bridle Path subdivision amenity area. The applicant also provides a pocket park at the entrance adjacent to Unditch Road and an amenity park on the northwestern portion of the subdivision. The open space requirement is 20% of development, while the proposed open space in this master plan accounts for approximately 27% of the development area. The recommended motion is to approve, is to recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning from T Transitional to KPI-MU Kelly Park Interchange to Mixed Use, with the assignment of neighborhood overlay and a master plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions of staff or the applicant? Okay, then we'll close the presentation, open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I find the proposed Plymouth-Sorrento North change of zoning and master plan consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code, and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the proposed change of zoning from T Transitional to KPI-MU Kelly Park Interchange to Mixed Use, assignment of the neighborhood overlay district, and approval of the master plan based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lrendo. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a change of zoning, Winding Meadows North and Master Plan, from T Transitional District to KPI-MU Kelly Park Interchange to Mixed Use. District owner is PMS1 REO LLC. The applicant is Appian Engineering LLC, in care of Luke Klassen PE. The location is 4476 Plymouth-Sorrento Road. We have staff presentation.
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the, of the Winding Meadows North rezoning from T Transitional to KPI-MU Kelly Park Interchange to Mixed Use, with neighborhood overlay and its accompanying master plan. Property falls within the Kelly Park Interchange Form-Based Code area. It's approximately 31.9 acres, situated south of Kelly Park Road, west of Plymouth-Sorrento Road, and east of State Road 429. The property currently has a future land use designation of mixed use permitting between one to five dwelling units per acre. The accompanying master plan proposes an extension of the previously approved Winding Meadows subdivision, which is south adjacent of this proposed development. The master plan proposes the development of 85 single-family detached dwelling units. The development program comprises of 16 units of 34-foot-wide lots rear-loaded, 20 units of 40-foot-wide rear-loaded lots, and 49 units of 55-foot-wide front-loaded lots. Residential units will have a minimum living area of 1,300 square feet for the 34-foot-wide and 40-foot-wide lots, and 1,500 square feet for its lots with 55 feet in width. There are no minimum and maximum living areas and lot size requirements in the KPI Form-Based Code area. The applicant provides a total of 4.7 acres of open space, which is 20% of the area. Amenities include a pocket park near the entrance of the subdivision, and an eight-foot-wide multipurpose trail connecting from the north and south. However, this development will also be served by the amenities within the previously approved Winding Meadows subdivision, that include an eight-foot-wide multipurpose trail along Plymouth-Sorrento Road, and internal to the site, a passive park path with benches along the perimeter of the Stormwater Ponds, a pool and cabana, another passive park, as well as a recreational field. DRC recommends approval, and the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning from T Transitional to KPI-MU Kelly Park Interchange to Mixed Use, with the assignment of neighborhood overlay district and the master plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff or the applicant?
I have a question. The Joey McGlocklin Road, would that be widened to accommodate traffic going back into that property?
Yes, sir. With this development, the developer will be donating or dedicating the right-of-way to build Joey McDuckin Road.
To build it?
They're working or coordinating with the developer north of this property, which is Laura Oaks rezoning, and you've seen the master plan previously, recommended approval of it. And so they're coordinating with that developer, so we can have the right-of-way to connect Joey McDuckin.
Okay, further questions? Okay, we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to find the proposed Winding Meadows North change of zoning and master plan consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code, and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the proposed change of zoning from T Transitional to KPI-MU Kelly Park Interchange to Mixed Use, and assignment of the neighborhood overlay district and approval of the master plan based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Stanley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a special exception to allow a childcare facility in the CC Community Commercial Zoning District. The owner is Lester Road Land Trust. The applicant is Concept Development Eek, care of Jonathan Huels. The location is the southeast corner of the Plymouth-Sorrento Road and Lester Road. This is a quasi-judicial item, so I would ask if anyone in the audience wishes to be considered an affected party for this item. And seeing none, I would ask the commissioners if anyone has had ex parte communications on this item.
No, sir.
Okay, and hearing none, I will proceed with a staff presentation. We're working you hard tonight, Jean.
Just one more after this, I promise. Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a special exception request to allow childcare facilities used in the CC Community Commercial Zoning District. The property is located on the southeast corner of Plymouth-Sorrento Road and Lester Road. Commercial future land use designations are found in the vicinity of the property, and the property itself has a future land use designation of commercial. It currently has a PD rezoning plan development. The area of the property shows that this project site is surrounded by residential uses and agricultural facilities. The subject property is currently undergoing the future land use designation of commercial, an amendment to the future land use, I'm sorry. The property is currently, has a designation of future land use commercial, and is presently assigned as zoning designation of PD plan development. The applicant has submitted a request to amend the zoning of the property to CC Community Commercial. The future land use, the zoning amendments are tentatively scheduled for city council second reading adoption in May 18, 2022, and the future land use designation for commercial is also scheduled for that adoption. Now, you might be a little bit confused. We are going through designating this property as a commercial future land use in order to correct a map error, because even though it shows it on here, we weren't able to find, in fact, an ordinance designating it as commercial. The applicant intends to operate a childcare facility, which requires a special exception use permit within the CC zoning district. They are also required to comply with all site design and other standards, including landscaping buffer requirements for special exception uses, and they are proposing a wall along the eastern boundary adjacent to Arbor Ridge residential subdivision, and a 15-foot-wide landscape buffer along southern and western boundaries. Per Land Development Code Section 2.5.1-G4, a special exception is required to comply with the standards shown up here, also outlined in your staff report. The DRC recommends approval of this special exception request. The recommended motion is to approve a special exception to allow a childcare facility used within the CC Community Commercial Zoning District, subject to the adoption of the future land use and zoning amendments, as well as exhibits and findings of the staff report. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the applicant or staff? Okay, we'll close the presentations, open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. I move that we approve a special exception to allow a childcare facility used within the CC Community Commercial Zoning District, subject to the adoption of the future land use and zoning amendments, as well as exhibits and findings of the staff report.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lrendo. Is there a second?
No, sir.
Second by Commissioner Gussler. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No, sir.
Okay, then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is major development plan, Willow Run subdivision. The owner is Lent Road Properties LLC and Testamentary Trust FBO Amanda P. Farrell. The applicant is Appian Engineering LLC, care of Luke Klassen's PE. The location is the southeast corner of Plymouth-Sorrento Road in Appy Lane. We have a staff presentation.
Again, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the Willow Run subdivision major development plan. The properties are located on the southeast corner of Plymouth-Sorrento Road and Appy Lane. The Willow Run subdivision major development plan proposes a residential development in the outskirts of the city's Form-Based Code area. The MDP offers, offers a development of 110 single-family detached residential units, in which each unit has a minimum living area of 12,500 square feet and a minimum lot width of 95 feet, consistent with the current zoning of RSF-1A. The applicant provides a total of 11.3 acres of open space, which is approximately 20% of the development area. Amenities include a pocket park near the Appy Lane entrance of the subdivision, as well as a dog park. There are two retention ponds proposed on the northern and southern areas of the development, and a walking path along the perimeter of the northern retention pond. The DRC recommends approval, and the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Willow Run subdivision major development plan, subject to the findings of the staff report. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions of staff or the applicant?
No, sir.
Okay, then we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to find the proposed Willow Run subdivision major development plan, consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code, and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommend approval of the major development plan, subject to the findings of the staff report and exhibits.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gussler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lrendo. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a plat, Golden Orchard. The owner is Lennar Homes LLC. The applicant is Polos and Bennett LLC and GL Summit Engineering Eek. The location is 4550 Golden Gem Road, and we have a staff presentation.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Phil Martinez, planner two with the city's planning division. The applicant is proposing a plat for a 165 single-family lot subdivision known as Golden Orchard. The subject property is highlighted in yellow and located off of Golden Gem Road to the east. The plat consists of 165 detached single-family homes with various tracks for open space and a lift station. In addition, the applicant has dedicated 10 feet of right-of-way along Golden Gem Road and 15 feet of right-of-way along Sadler Road. Access to the site is proposed off of Golden Gem Road to the east, Sadler Road to the south, and a future connection point at the northwest. The plat is consistent with the master major development plan approved by the city council on May 19th, 2021, and is consistent with the construction plan approved by the development review committee on October 21st, 2021. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions of staff?
No, sir.
And there's no presentation by the applicant. Sir, do you have, would you come up and give us your name and address for the record?
Yeah, my name's Jay Parker, and I live adjacent to that development.
Okay, we'll close the presentation, then we'll start, this is the part of the public hearing, so if you, again, if you'd just give us the name and address for the record.
My name's Jay Parker, and I live at 4505 Sadler Road, which is bounded on two sides by that property. Just sit down and come back up, or?
No, you're fine here. Go ahead.
I don't really know what I'm doing here, but how these, how these things work. This is not my business or my operation. I'm a concerned neighbor.
Okay.
And, you know, this 165 homes, I own a horse farm, okay, and it's my residence. I have a 5,000-square-foot house back there. And, you know, that type of development right on top of me, which I've already started on, there's nothing I can do to stop it. But I've asked several times for them to put up a wall in between the two, and I've, you know, I've contacted Phil Martinez, you know, different kind of commissioners, I send the emails. It's like, it's not required. It's a huge disparity in the use of these properties. One side we have a sleepy, quiet horse farm that's been there for 20 years, and the other side we have this high-density development. And I don't think a wall is too much to ask. You know, I'm bounded on two sides, 660 feet in the back, and probably 1,000 feet down the other side, not completely down the other side. And Alan Rice, the neighbor that backs up on the west side, has a nursery over there, and he would also like a wall. It's a commercial operation. And, you know, there's other things that are kind of compounding what our concerns are. There is a new Orange County school complex going in on the corner of Sadler and Round Lake, and so our properties would be the cut-through, kind of enticing cut-through for any kids coming through there. And also, you know, kids from the, from the housing development. It may be interesting for them to come try to feed the horses or play with the horses, and it can be very dangerous. You know, one of them gets kicked in the head, it's a big problem. And it's something we can't police all the time, and we wouldn't be liable for it from Florida state statute. But the person who does not put a wall up there, after it's been pointed out, I think probably would be liable. I'm not a lawyer, so I'd have to look at that. But I'm here to point out that there is potential problems. And in the beginning, I came in, and I said that there could be a drainage issue because of the way the land is. Everybody's like, no, no, there can't be a drainage issue. Guess what? There was. There was a huge canyon cut through our property about three weeks ago. They're all very nice about it, and said they tried to fix it and it wouldn't happen again. But, you know, I fixed it. And the thing is, is we need to avoid instances before they happen. And I'm not moving. I have to live somewhere. And the best thing we can do is coexist. And that wall would be a stretch. It would be a huge stretch in that direction.
And have you participated in any of the early stages of this?
I did, and the first, at the second one, and I've been, there's record of it, videotape everything, and I was told, with all due respect, this is decided on by the, this is the city council, not you guys. I just recently figured out I should come here. Maybe I should have been here earlier, but like I say, I'm not a developer. And at any rate, I came, and they said, you know, with all due respect, Mr. Parker, this has been decided on, we're just basically here to, to do the formality of approving it, because it's been decided on by the St. John's Water Management District, the city, the county, state, that it's within one mile of the interchange radius. And I'm, and I'm within that mile, too.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's my understanding, is it's late in the game. This actually, this plat reflects what has been approved, and I defer to staff, but I think that's...
I've definitely been sending emails and stuff. I have lots of records of it to the planning and engineering. And, you know, they say it's not required, you know, by statute. And, you know, there's a lot of things that aren't required, but are the right thing to do, for both the residents that they have moving in there, and for me.
Okay.
I mean, I'm ag exempt, I mean, I can be, I can be a bad neighbor and get away with I mean, I can be, I can be a bad neighbor and get away with it.
Well, I hear what you're saying, and I understand your concern. I, in all honesty, I think it's, it'll be up to this commission to vote to approve the plat or not approve the plat, but I think it's awfully late in the game to raise these issues, because it, essentially, it's all been done. If, if it was going to be done differently, it should have been at one of the earlier stages in the proceeding.
With all due respect on that, there isn't a huge amount of difference whether they put up a little fence that's six-foot tall or a wall that's eight. It's an add-on at the end of the day.
Okay, we hear your comments.
Yeah, and it probably won't make any difference this time either.
Very possibly not. I don't know, but that's, that's, we're not timing the four minutes, but I, I think you've probably had your four minutes, actually.
Excuse me?
The comments are limited to four minutes, and we, we, we hear your comments. Everybody here hears it, and, and we'll, we'll, we'll vote, and we'll see how it goes.
Great, thank you. It's all I can ask.
Okay, thanks. Okay, any further comments? Then we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
I'll make a, a motion. Chairman, direct and approve the Golden Orchard plat.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Stanley. Is there a second?
No, second.
Second by Commissioner Gussler. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. Okay, do we have any old business? Do we have any new business?
It's, it's old and it's new.
Okay. Well, I tell you, I guess I would, I would add one item of new business. It's certainly been a pleasure working with the commissioners, and I would like very much to compliment the staff. A lot happens between the time something comes into the city and it gets to this commission, and it really reflects the good work of our staff, and you guys make it awfully easy on us, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the commission and, and, and Mr. Green. It's been a pleasure having you here. I look forward to seeing you at the beach. As I told you before, New Smurfs is one of my favorite beaches to go to. We got a lot of them to go to in Florida, but I just want to wish you as many great walks as you can ever stomach, and hopefully I'll be able to drink a beer with you on the beach.
I'm gonna look forward to it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for appointment for Mr. Gussler to be chair when you make change.
Okay.
If that's all right with you.
I think we can, I know we have to do it at the first meeting of the year, but I don't think there's any problem in doing it at this point, is there? I defer to the attorney.
Well, the, the, the planning commission rules are, yes, that the, the board is, is the governing body, the board, is elected at the first meeting. So at this point where we're at, since we're really in the middle of the, of the term, that the vice chair will be acting chair until the first meeting, and then when we have a fully constituted board after then, then there'll be a reelection. So at that point, I think the vice chair will be the acting chair, and then the, this board may, once we have a replacement, can then vote to have who will be a, basically an interim vice chair until the, the meeting, the meeting which then calls for the election. Because we'll have to have a term, we'll have to have a replacement who's going to complete the term, the, the term, and then at the end of that term, there'll be the, the reappointment for this commission to, for a new term. So that's probably the best bet, is that we'll, we'll just have the vice chair will be acting chair at the next meeting, and then the board can, once the replacements are appointed, can then vote to have a, a vice chair to complete the term.
Oh, question. What would happen if the vice chair is not available until that time? Who leads the meeting?
Well, if the chair is available, then the, the vice chair, as I said, at this point, we'll have an acting, you will have, the vice chair will be the acting chair at that meeting, once we have the replacement. Hopefully for the June meeting, there'll be the replacement. The board can then elect a vice chair to complete, to complete the, the seat of vice chair for the remaining six meetings of twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, so it sounds like it should be something that would be done next meeting.
The next, once the replacement's named, then the, the next meeting, the vice, a vice chair can be selected to, to fulfill, to fill that vacancy on, on the commission.
Does the council have candidates or have a, a new assignment to vote on?
At this point, no. I don't know.
The mayor hasn't indicated anybody at this stage.
Okay, any further new business? There being no further business to come before the commission will be adjourned.